Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Protam Gilda Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here. Report on action taken during closed session, Mr. Malave.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss the two items on the closed session agenda, performance evaluation of the city manager and a conference with labor negotiator regarding the city manager. The city council had a discussion with the city manager and with the city attorney on items number one and two, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. For this evening, our invocation will be provided by Pastor Dan Quant, and afterwards, if you will remain standing for the pledge of allegiance with me.
Let us pray. Oh God, we live in trying times, as our nation is as divided as it's ever been. But that doesn't mean that we have to be. There are people in this room who care about Lompoc, or they wouldn't be here. And so, we pray that we might try to listen to one another with an open heart, believing that maybe none of us ever sees the whole picture, listening for truth from unexpected places, and knowing that we are stronger when we come together than when we remain isolated from one another. We thank you for this space set apart for the business of our city, and we pray that even tonight, this room might be filled with a spirit of compassion and kindness, one that leads us to do what is right and fair for all people as best as we are able. May mutual respect, honest dealing, and mutual service be the standard for our common life as Lompokians. We especially ask your blessing upon those who are sitting behind the dais tonight, who have stepped up as public servants. Give them patience when the meeting runs too long. Give them hope when all seems lost. Give them a vision for this city that will inspire and encourage us to keep pressing forward, always seeking new ways to use the unique gifts that are ours here on this wonderful little city on the coast, people and resources that you have entrusted to our care and keeping. In your name, we ask it. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troop, city manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually did not have anything prepared for tonight. I will make it up for the next time.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns for city manager before we move on? Councilmember Mosby?
If I could quickly, there's been some comments out there in the newspaper, in the forums about this tax measure, and people concerned, some people are being told, you vote for it, your power is going to be turned off, or your wastewater plant is going to be closed down. Can you help to put some of those things to sleep and stop some of the panic components that are out there?
Yeah, no, like you said, that's, I think, some people trying to cause a panic out there to try and convince people on it. We've been going out making different presentations. We have the flyers that mailed out to everybody. It's all very educational. I'm hoping that there's not a lot of people out there saying that they're going to shut something off because the city is not going to be shutting your water off, or your power off, or any, anything that you can think of. It's, that's not correct, and that's, that shouldn't be stated.
Thank you.
We'll move on to consent calendar. Public comment on consent calendar is three minutes. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. If you'd like to speak on an issue listed on the consent calendar, you have three minutes and may come to the microphone now. Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Is there any items that would like to be pulled, or do I have a motion? Councilmember Mosby?
If you could take it in two votes, because I own property within 204 North C Street, so...
We can definitely do a motion for items one and two, and a separate motion for item three.
And because it's on the consent calendar, he doesn't need to leave the room.
All right. Councilmember Vega?
Item number two, I'd like to at least pull that for discussion, or I can ask a couple of questions now, depending on how you want it, Mayor.
Well, for efficiency, if the questions are easy to answer, that might be the way to go, rather than a full discussion of the two items.
Yes, and I remember this moving forward, but there were questions that were being asked budget-wise, to the cost of these meetings. Now, if you could refresh my memory to see, was this approved regardless of the motion to bring back what the costs are, or was that tied in? Because I don't believe we've received those numbers.
So, it wasn't tied in. We made the recommendation and made an ask of the Public Safety Commission to identify and work on ways to reduce the cost, and they are currently going through that process. But it wasn't tied to whether or not we would give them the additional meetings.
Okay, because I remember at one of the public safety meetings, it was also asked again, because it's a budgetary issue, so I have an issue with something being pushed forward with being blindsided because we've gone through so much with the budget. And I just wanted to make that clear to the public, you know, budget is the budget. There is a cost to public safety. It's not about the additional meetings, it's about the budgetary issue here. And if it was more efficient to have quarterly meetings and come back and have special meetings, and that's the statement I wanted to make.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the clarity on that. And again, the committee made the commitment to identify ways to reduce the cost, and if they can identify it, then as council, we can absolutely bring that up with them and say, make a recommendation to reduce the number of their meetings because they haven't identified. So I think giving them a chance to increase their meetings, see if the attendance increases, and they can identify ways to reduce the cost is, is an opportunity we need to give them. So, thank you for that clarity. Any other questions on these matters before we move forward? Councilmember Starbuck?
Before I make a motion to accept consent item three, I'd like to just kind of make a quick comment here, that I've never seen our building give money back. So, I'm sure it cost Mr. Halsey, who's in the audience, more money than what he's getting sent back, and I wish Mr. Halsey had a lot of luck on a good infill project. We're starting off fresh. Thank you. And I move we accept consent calendar item three.
And we need a motion for items one and two first, so that we can do a full vote and a separate motion for item three with a separate vote.
Well, if we're going to go that way, I'll count the right way. I'd make movement that we go ahead and accept consent calendar items one and two.
That's very helpful. Thank you for that. And we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll move we accept item three now.
Awesome. I will give you a second on that. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 4-0-1 with Mr. Mosby abstaining as a result of required. We'll move to staff presentations, announcements, and requests, which are, none are agendized. And now, we'll open the floor for oral communications regarding city matters for three minutes. If it's an item that's on the agenda, the preference is to wait till that item, but if you can't, now's your time. Or if there's any other item regarding the community and the city management, you're welcome to come forward right now for three minutes.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike McCormick. I'm with Baywa Renewable Group. We are the developers of the Strauss Wind Project. As you're aware, the project was approved by the Santa Barbara Planning Commission in November of 2019, and by the board of supervisors just last week. We plan on start construction later this month. The project is supported broadly by the local environmental community as well as the business community. This concludes support of over 30 environmental organizations, the San Yves Band of Indians, Schumash Indians, the Santa Barbara County Coalition of Chamber of Commerce, the local unions, including local ironworkers 433. With over 150 construction jobs and five to seven permanent jobs, the city of Lompoc will see significant benefits to the local businesses. We've worked hard to reduce the impacts of the project over the last three years, including impacts reducing the Lompoc city streets and infrastructure. After careful consideration of these impacts and coordination with engineers and logistics and alternative transportation route, was developed to ensure the impact of the cities would be minimized to the maximum extent. We have also coordinated closely with city staff and public works for this alternative route, which utilizes Santa Luisa Road to Ocean Avenue and making a right on I Street, keeping the majority of the traffic out of the center of the city. This alternative route was approved by the Santa Barbara County and supported by the city of Lompoc in a letter dated just November of 18, 2019. I'd like to read a portion of this letter if I could. This says, "The city requests that the planning commission approve the alternative route. This route would include Santa Luisa Canyon to Ocean 246 and I Street. As its primary route for transport of equipment, this option avoids multiple turns through the center of our town in favor of a single movement through I Street. However, unfortunately, we have recently told by city staff that the use of I Street is no longer an option, without any explanation other than, this is what I've been directed to do. When I asked city public works staff if a study had been completed to show some kind of technical justifications for the denial of use of I Street, the answer was, no study was completed. We have made a request via email to the city staff and the city manager to reconsider the denial of I Street, and we have received no response to date. Today, I filed our encroaching permit, application requesting the use of I Street. In the upcoming weeks, our transportation companies will start filing transportation permits as well using that same route. Today, I asked city council to coordinate with city staff and support our current encroaching permit application and upcoming transportation permits allowing us to exit from Ocean to I Street. This will avoid going us to the center, the center of the city and making multiple turns impacting city traffic and city streets. Again, this route is what the city had asked for and was approved by the, by the planning commission. Our construction is going to start very, very soon, so we ask for immediate response if possible. I also have six copies of this letter, if you want the letters."
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else has a public comment, please go ahead and queue up for...
Good afternoon. Giving honor to the mayor and the city council. I'm Reverend Thomas Brandenburg. I've drove people around this city for almost three and a half years for free. But now, I've been doing union in the community, going on my sixth year. A couple of city councilmen have been there and supported me. But I knew it needed more than just being a free barbecue for everybody. So, I got lucky, and I went out and I started talking to these, a couple of CEOs when I was in Santa Maria for some, some drug stuff and gang stuff there. And I've been able to speak to some people that's going to bring me about 100 jobs for young people on this state. And I'm going to have a union in the community April 11. It'll be from 11 to 3:00. And it'll be a free barbecue and with a speaker. And we'll have jobs for my young kids. I live in the, kind of the ghetto area. I'm probably from that side of town. And I spoke to some youngsters, and I said, "What could I do to help you?" And most of them said they needed empowerment. There are no, there are no jobs for them. They're certain thing. And so, I went out and tried to find jobs for them. And on this date, the kids from 16 to 28, they have programs for some of the places here, that they can hire kids at that age, starting the day after Easter. So, those people will be with me at the barbecue. And I'm hoping that the city will come out and represent me. We can all, where we can find role models of every color, you know? Sometimes, you may be bad, but God makes you good. And some of our kids need good role models that have been through some stuff. And that's what I'm hoping to do on April 11. If anybody would like to contact me or help me in any way, they can dial me, they can look up Little Help Transportation Lompoc on the computer, and it has my phone number where you can reach me. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucy Tomes Harrington, and I'm a member of the American Association of University Women. The mission of the American Association of University Women in Lompoc and Vandenberg is to promote gender equity in education for women and girls. And last Friday, we had our third annual speech track high school contest right here in the chamber, and it was a tremendous success for the, this third time we've held the contest. It's to promote the skills and tools for young people to learn how to use their voice on issues that are important to them. This year's topic was chosen by A U W at the state level was, are men and women equal today, or are the suffragists of 1920 still suffering in 2020? And so, seven students from Lompoc to San Ynez spoke on that topic, had the courage to speak on that topic, and they got to use one four-by-six card to do it. We had an independent panel of judges from community and community leaders. This was a packed house in here last Friday afternoon, and I appreciate Jim for being one of the community judges for our event, and also for Mayor Osborne, who presided over the awards ceremony. So, we had a third place winner going to Edgar Ortiz, who won $100. He's from Lompoc High School. Yasmin Avalos, who won second place, $150 prize, from Lompoc High School. And our winner this year went to Olivia Burman, who won $250, and she attends Dunn High School. First year, we've had Dunn here. First year, Cabrillo attended. And of course, we always have Maple in Lompoc High. It was a great contest. The speeches were powerful, and it was a packed house to hear their voices. Like to thank the city for this venue. It's powerful. Olivia's tape will go on to the state, where she'll compete for other prizes for A U W at its convention in March. Thank you to the sponsors who facilitate the prizes for these students, and also for A U W's work with the youth to give them the power of the voice. Imagine some of them will sit on the dais sometime. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I also have some programs I'm sure you're going to want to keep a reminder for next year.
Good evening, city council. I would like to extend my gratitude and thanks for the consideration of the project that I've been working on for a while. And I'd like to make a comment that I feel that the building department is very considerate of my position and what I've gone through. And I'd like to thank the city attorney and all that's involved with what I've been trying to proceed with. And I believe that the new building official that we have now seems to be, things are heading in the right direction. And I'd like to thank all of you for your consideration.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close oral communications and move on to the agenda item number four, which is council appointments to the youth commission. Currently, we have one adult term ending 1/20/21, another adult term ending 1/20/22, a youth term ending 1/20/21, two youth terms ending 1/20/22, and an associate term ending 1/21/1021, and three associate terms ending 1/20/22. And while we don't have applications for those youth and associate terms at the moment, I make that announcement so that those of you in the community who know young people in the Lompoc High, Maple High, Cabrillo, can reach out to them. This is an exciting opportunity for them to better understand local government, their impacts on making decisions. They put on the teen conference that will happen, the leadership conference that happens in March, and is being promoted currently. It is a great chance to, again, find their voice and advocate for things. So if you know of a young individual out there who would like to participate and craft youth organization events for our city, please reach out to them and encourage them to apply. That being said, we have two adults applying, Diana Garcia and Beverly Kennedy, and we have two adult terms open. So, we just need nominations for each term, and deciding which adult goes to which term, I think, would be sufficient to make as a single motion. Any thoughts? Councilmember Vega?
I'll nominate Beverly Kennedy to the term ending in 1/20/22.
Okay. And I will nominate Diana Garcia to the 1/20/21. If we can get a second on those two motions?
Second.
Councilmember Cordova has seconded those two motions. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, and we thank Diana and Beverly for being willing to guide our young people in this organization. And again, encourage students to apply to be on the committee. Our next agenda item is new business. Item five is adoption of resolution number 6304 (20), policy on the procedure for this, for the discontinuance of residential water service for delinquent accounts or other circumstances. And we have financial service manager Melinda Wall for the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Tonight, we come before you asking for your adoption of the procedure for the discontinuance of residential water service for delinquent accounts and other circumstances. This resolution is an item that will allow us to implement SB 998, passed by the governor of California in 2018. It didn't have to be implemented until February 2018, 2020, excuse me. And it had a due date of February 1st, but we couldn't bring it to you until this evening. But we are implementing the proposed items that we had sent for this policy upfront. What this means is that when we send out notices or policies to individuals, it has to be given in English, Spanish, Chinese, and forgive me for pronouncing this word, Tagalog, which is Filipino, Vietnamese, and Korean. And if we had 10% of the population speaking another language, we would have to have that also incorporated in this. This policy also requires that we report to the state board every year the number of accounts we turn off in water. And they'll take our information and post it on their website. Basically, SB 998 is saying that you cannot discontinue non-payment of residential water unless you give an opportunity for that individual to go into either an agreement or another process to say that they don't have the ability to pay. Some of the things that you have to have on the notice is the link or information of where they can get the extension ability, what we need to do to process the, any applications for extending time. So, what the legislation wanted to do is give everybody the right for water. And they said that anyone that has any kind of health conditions that are life-threatening, or the physician will say that they need water if they are fiscally unable to pay. And they give the federal poverty level times 200. So, it's, for an individual, it's like $25,520. And it also says that you have to cap the cost of turn on the water, and they can have an interest charge waived once every 12 months. And then, the alternative payment arrangements, some of these things we're already doing. So if someone comes in, they need to have a bill extended, they can sign a contract saying that they will pay 10% of that bill that's outstanding every, every month until it gets paid off. Other alternative payment schedules can be suggested by the customer, and if it, if the financial services manager or director, sorry, management services director is designated, is approved to apply those kind of payments, that's accepted. So, starting February 1st, for 60 days, when anyone gets a new bill, they're, they're not going to be turned off. And if they don't enter an alternate payment agreement, the city then can go ahead and turn that person off. But it's, we need to be able to give everybody the right to figure out how then they can pay. So, the things that are going to affect the city is that we, we have to send out three notices before we do a turnoff. They request that we do a phone service. So, we're looking into getting a phone calling system to notify people that they're going to be turned off, but that won't be applicable until we get the new immune assist going. And then, we can use the call center in there to give people a notice, hey, you're 48 hours away from being turned off. And actually, the, the dates are like five days. You have to give them seven days in 1Ks and five days in another to let them know that they're... know that they're in jeopardy of being turned off. And we have two vendors that will translate policy and notices for us. But trying to fit everything into a reasonable package for notices is gonna be a little bit hard because we have to have it in six languages. It does say we can put it onto our internet, and what we'll do with that, we'll have little taglines saying, "For more information, please go to the city website," and we'll get the policy changed. We also need to come back with our utility billing rules and regulations and update some of that information in there because we have deadlines and such that we posted in that. And I'm open to any questions, if you have anything.
Councilmember Vega.
Melinda, is any of this more stringent than the rules and regulations we have currently for people that are overdue and need a payment arrangement?
Are more stringent?
Yes.
No, they're, it's very...
This is not, it's giving someone that's having a hardship another alternative, correct?
Yeah. And basically, even though we have this amount that we need to verify that they're, what their income level is, if they write us a note saying they're below the poverty line, we have to accept that note.
I got you. I got you. So it's actually a benefit to the public and people that are having hardship, or their income's just not making it work right now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
When you mentioned that you were going to have the translations in other languages on the website, and then you said there would be a line on the actual letter that, for more information, is that line the intention to have each of those languages in that, in that, for more information, in each of those languages on that initial letter, so that they can recognize that if they don't, aren't able to read that, in their language?
Yeah.
Okay. I figured that was it, but I wanted clarification, and, and thank you for that. Any more questions? Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, so, excuse me. What I'm reading is, is basically, if you're not making any money, you get free water. So we're like a sanctuary water city now.
This is what the state of California has imposed on every city.
So it's the trickle-down effect from a sanctuary state to sanctuary water city here. So what I'm getting here is, we're gonna give water away, and we're gonna do it annually for certain customers here. That's what it says back on, you know, section two and three, alternative pay and financial inability.
Yes, it makes it harder for the city to...
See, that doesn't reflect in the physical impact, which I'm curious about how much money are the ratepayers gonna subsidize the sanctuary water users?
Yeah, we'll find, we'll find out. Back in 2013, when we started enforcing our utility billing rules and regulations, we had about 347,000 every year go to the credit bureau. This last year, we had about 200,000 that went to credit bureaus. So that was, that's a big change.
Yeah, well, that's when we changed the billing from 45, or back to 45. We couldn't get 37 days on it, but this is gonna come out as a separate thing now. You'll be in a dark room without any heat with free water, is what I'm gathering here.
Yeah. And we could, we did look at trying to do just electric turnoff, but it seemed, we don't have all the kings worked out. If we found something that we could do, yeah, we'd come back to city council and say, yes, we'll keep their water on, but yeah, we'll give them a dark room.
Yeah, I guess, just for my own, is this gonna trickle into other utilities, you know, as a city that's full service?
Yes. Our, our bill is a combined bill. It's not a separate bill for all of the utilities. So it would give them an extra month to pay.
Right. But later on, is, are we gonna have mandates from the state that say, oh, well, guess what, now electric?
You know, there are very few cities that have electrical utility components to them, so they tend not to touch that. So right now, I just see it as a water, and you can't really...
Yeah, 'cause if we become a sanctuary electric city, then it's gonna be even worse for ratepayers again, then.
Maybe, yeah.
Probably. Well, we'll see then, huh?
Councilmember Mosby.
I guess if it, if it got too large, we would have the ability to potentially separate out and continue to bill for other utility components other than water? Because they're only mandating water, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think one of the reasons why they do the water is because there's a health, safety, and a life safety component with water. There's also an emergency component with water. So it's not just like trying to pick on, they have realized there is a critical reason for water being an issue. It's not just that other cities don't have electric, because they could take care of PG&E if they had to as well. But it's, I think there's the life safety component that's involved with, with water.
Councilmember Vega.
I agree. This is a basic need for life, for cleanliness. You have kids involved. We have people that have, we've already admitted, we have a lot of low ink, lower income and moderate income people with hardships. I'm sure each one of us is related to someone that's probably having a hardship at one day or another. So I disagree with Councilman Starbuck calling it a sanctuary city for water. I think that's kinda disrespectful. I said to the people that are having hardships, but I can tell you, you know, having water on is gonna allow them to clean their kids, give them a drink of water, get ready for the next thing, and I'm sure they're expecting some money to turn on the rest of it. And I'm glad there's programs available that will allow them to get work. In the staff report, it also says there are other alternatives for people that don't have the money to, to ask for some sort of, some help. So my comment is, hey, I'm glad if they're getting help because we're thinking of ourselves individually as adults, but you're not thinking of yourself as families. And we need to help the families. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other kind of questions for staff, thank you, Ms. Wall, and we'll open it to public comment. You have three minutes of public comment on this item, if you'd like to speak to it.
Hello. Good evening, council. Again, my name is Gary Halsey. I'd like to know what the impact's gonna be for the city. You know, I mean, we're already having budget issues. We need to know what this is gonna cost us, I think. I would imagine. We need to find out if there's any other programs available through the state to compensate the city for implementing these programs. I think somebody should be looking into that, I would hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova.
So as I understand it, we're not, it's not like we're waiving anybody's fees or saying that they don't have to pay. We're just extending the timeframe from which people that are struggling to make the payment, it gives them an opportunity to maybe catch up or create a payment plan. Obviously, there's gonna be, at some point in time, people that can't ever pay. And then, from what I understand on the staff report, and, and what was being said by staff, was that those people would then also have maybe a lighter reconnection fee or something like that, once they do get to that point. So, again, we're not waiving fees for anybody in that sense. It's just giving them the opportunity to have an extended payment plan. There will be some physical impact due to the fact that there will be, at some point in time, people that can't pay altogether. But everybody, everybody, if they live in the city, they need the services, they will be required to pay sooner or later, so.
Councilmember Vega.
Thank you so much. There's a human factor to this, so I agree with it. So I'm gonna make a motion that we, we accept adoption of resolution 6304 parentheses 20. So I'm making the motion that we accept it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
I'll give it a second. I have a question for the city attorney.
Sure.
We're mandated by SB 998, correct? And if we don't, it's a $1,000 a day fine.
You are correct.
So, let's kinda say there, there's an impact that if we don't do this. So, until they decide otherwise, we have to move forward.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Any written communications, Madam Clerk? Nothing. Thank you. We'll open the floor once again for oral communications regarding city matters. You have two minutes. So if there is an issue you'd like to bring to our attention, or comments about any decisions made tonight, you have two minutes in order to make a public comment. Seeing no one rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
You know, on the commissions and committees, I know that we put a restriction on the filling any more positions on the economic development, till we had some sort of a, the way I remember. But I do have a beautification application, I believe, and so I just wanted to make a comment and see if there was any restriction on us filling that. I don't believe so. So it's just a comment that I do have another appointment at another time, okay?
I believe they've finished their meetings, and we're gonna work on the ad hoc meeting to meet with them. And then, as a full agenda item, we'll come back, the recommendation from the ad hoc and the committees about any change in structure, as well as new appointees or appointments that we need to fill on those.
Okay. And I think the youth commission must have been exempt because we did fill one tonight, so I'm just clarifying, okay?
Yeah, the public safety committee, we had already made a decision in that evening's meeting, so they didn't participate in it. And then the utility commission chose not to meet last month, so they're, they have yet to meet and provide us the feedback regarding...
Well, thank you for that clarification.
Sure. Councilmember Cordova.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting on January 22nd. There was a lot of questions in regards to the tax measure that's coming up, and I know that the chamber will be having their own event. I believe it's this Thursday.
February 20th.
February 20th, next month.
This month, February 20th.
This month. We're in February.
Yes.
So, you know, if you want more information, there's another avenue where you can get some information. I also attended the Youth Services Commission meeting, and I was so impressed by the young people that were at that meeting and seeing them, you know, operate as a body, as a minor body of, of our city, an extension of our city. And I loved the staff interaction that I saw there. It, it's just amazing to see that our staff does really take these commissions seriously. And so I do give them props for working with the youth commission and making them feel like it's important, and they're putting on this event. I'm just so proud of them. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
A quick comment about the letter that we have in front of us. Is that something that can get rectified? Do I need to make a council request for discussion? It seems to me like what the letter states here is not happening there, or...
I, I can get back, when I get back next week, I can set up meetings and discuss it.
I'm just wondering if we should set this up as an appeal component, the gentleman has, almost seems like it was moved as forward.
I think it's best if I set up the meetings first to discuss with council.
Okay, very good. I'll let it go at that, then. Just wanted to comment, again, some of the stuff's getting a little out of hand on the, on the tax discussion. There's threats of the pool closure, there's threats that your wastewater plant's not gonna be working, threats that parks are gonna be fenced off. It actually, I guess, a study was done that the swimming pool to mothball would probably cost more than to continue to operate it, since you wouldn't see a revenue stream, and you still have to maintain a $15 million structure. So, tell everybody, just, just keep the numbers on the table. Don't, don't try to fear the people into a component. Don't try to promise things that aren't gonna happen. Give them the black and white. I had a great discussion the other night, about 50 people from the public were here and discussed opportunities and options. And I think it's important to keep it that way. But don't try to gain this on people by creating fear. I know there was a statement that's, that was on the forms that vote for your power's gonna be turned off. I'm gonna send the people down there. We don't need to go that level. Hopefully, we can keep it and, and get it through and, and get it to pass without all the fear components. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the point-in-time count, and I want to thank all the volunteers that got up at 5:30 in the morning, on a very cold morning, to go out and survey our community and talk to those that are unfortunately homeless at the time, and really help make sure that data was accurate. And for those that are homeless, being willing enough to talk to us, because I know that's a difficult conversation to have with anyone. So thank you to all the, the individuals that participated in that. I attended the Vandenberg Air Force Base Fourth Quarter Award Lunch. I had the honor of being invited to the International Order of Odd Fellows Installation of Officers, and I would say it is the longest-standing civic organization in our community, and they are an amazing group. And if you're interested in getting involved in a group whose sole mission is to support our community and those with, that are less advantaged, consider joining and becoming a member. The facility is very old and historical, but they are looking at improving it and being utilized by the public. So they could use the membership and the, and the support. So look into it. It is fascinating history, and, and I really appreciate their invitation. Again, congratulations to the AAUW speech track contest winners. The young people that came out, men and women from our high schools, were amazing. Very nervous, but amazing to get up and speak in front of us, so I really appreciate them. I attended the retirement of our two fire battalion commanders, Mark Bray and Chuck Ruta, to thank them personally for the length of service they had provided to us. And I attended the Lompoc Valley Peace Prize event. Mr. Mosby, is there something you'd like to say? Because I can hear you talking, and I appreciate that you may have a conversation, but until I'm done, I would appreciate not hearing your voice coming from the other end and being respectful, as I am during your commentary. Thank you. So, the Lompoc Valley Peace Prize was awarded this year to Yasmeen Dawson, and I want to congratulate her. She really rose to the moment and is advocating for the community that she sees as being underserved, and I want to congratulate her for being recognized and for the other things she is going to continue to do in this community and make huge strides. I also attended the Santa Barbara Foundation, Santa Maria Times Veterans Honor Service. They had identified 15 veterans in our community across North County that they did stories on over this past year, and it was amazing to see the individuals personally recognized and be given awards for their service to our community. I attended the LLV class discussion. They asked for someone to come talk to them about the sales tax issue and ask questions, so I was attending there. And then, last but not least, I was appointed to the League of California Cities Policy Committee for Transportation, Communication, and Public Works, and I attended the first quarterly meeting in Sacramento to advocate for our needs locally, predominantly because we sit on Highway One, we have huge public work infrastructure needs, and we also have broadband running through our community, and the 5G issue and needing a stronger broadband competition in the community is really important. It's important for other communities of our size. So I feel privileged to be able to advocate not only for Lompoc, but other communities of our size. That's my report out. I have no council requests, and I will adjourn this meeting until the regular meeting at 6:30 PM on February 18th, 2020. on February 18th, 2020.